It's 5 o'clock. We'll call the county board to order. Roll call.
We have 15 supervisors attending in person, eight attending remotely. We have two supervisors excused, Supervisors Muwa and Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Johnson will be joining us later potentially remotely.
The pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Supervisor Jankowski.
Heavenly Father, help us as a board to remember our purpose, which is to care for all entrusted to us, to be attentive to all people's needs, remembering we are all one in being. We continue to thank you for all the benefits we have received in this county. And we ask you to help us to remember those who care for our health and safety, protect all first responders, paramedics, law enforcement officers, military, and all those who go about their task trying to keep our economy going. Help us to remember all those who have passed before us, keeping those in our thoughts, and be with us all. Amen.
Review approval of January 19, 2021 minutes. Motion by Supervisor Duback, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Any discussion, corrections, changes? Call those in favor with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Correspondence.
2020 highlights Portage County Public Library, forward analytics, the COVID economy, the economic impact of COVID-19 in Wisconsin, and then delayed redistricting and the impact on 2022 elections. Prior to the meeting, I did send out an email with a memorandum from Van Bruusen, WCA's legal counsel. I also put it on everyone's desk that is in person. Attached to that email was also a WCA correspondence regarding redistricting. Is that me causing that noise? Okay. So as many of you probably know, redistricting follows the census typically the following year. Because of COVID, the census data was delayed. The memorandum that came out from Van Bruusen does say that we are expected to receive the census data as of July 30. Typically, we would have received it around March 30. So obviously, there's a delay in that. The WCA correspondence that came out on Friday has actually updated that deadline or that date of when we'll receive the census data. And it will be September 30 according to the Census Bureau. So this is just kind of informational purposes for everyone. This will impact the redistricting process and will likely delay it until 2022, potentially later. I'm not really sure at this point. And it will have an impact on the 2022 elections. The WCA correspondence has a Zoom meeting information for anyone interested in attending a webinar on February 24 so they can join in on the questions and answers with the WCA. So I would encourage supervisors to attend that. I will certainly be on the call. I know that a few of you were on the last one last week. So that's all.
Thank you. Number six. Agenda minutes overview for March County Board. I just wanted to let the county board know that Wisconsin Counties Association will be here to give a presentation on minutes and agendas for everyone. I just wanted to let everybody know ahead of time so if they had questions or thoughts to be prepared.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have a point of procedure question. Seeing that our next presentation is Health and Human Service Director and County Executive on the COVID-19 update. I see that Mr. Lattick, who wrote a letter about our county's response to COVID vaccine, is online. I would ask that we could suspend the rule that we would not be taking any public comment. And if he would like to comment, allow him to.
I will allow him to after the presentation because some of these questions may be answered, I believe, at that point. So I will allow Mr. Lattick to speak afterwards if he has the mind to do so. But I will move on, and I have acknowledged it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Number seven. Health and Human Service Director Shabelski and County Executive Holman on the COVID-19 update. I get to see Ray once a month in person.
I'm like a bad penny. I just keep coming back. Good evening. Good to see you all. And for those of you online. So where we're at, just currently, just start out with our testing. Our testing has shrunken considerably for the number of people that want to get tested. So with that being said, that we have now reduced our testing to twice a week from three times a week. We still have the National Guard testing for us on Mondays, or that's the wing testing. So they're there from 9 to 5 on Mondays. And then we have our own staff along with EMTs doing testing only on Thursdays from 1 to 5. We have reduced the amount of test kits that we request through the National Guard from 300 a week down to 150. You know, so far in, well, we did not test yesterday with the wing because it was President's Day. But the week before that, we only tested 24 people with wing. In the month of February, we've tested 35, but we did not test last week because last Thursday, we had that significant weather event. So we closed for the day. Since the beginning of the pandemic, we've tested 3,146 people at the ADRC. That's just the county testing. So we continue to run about an 18% positivity rate on those tests. In regards to our numbers where we're at this week, as of yesterday, we've had 6,372 positive cases identified here in Portage County. We've had 25,654 negative cases. We've had 278 people hospitalized since the beginning of the pandemic. And we've had 63 fatalities since the start of the pandemic. Our seven-day average, so confirmed average with a PCR test, is at 10.71. So we're at 10.71 positive cases a day. It has put an impact on our contact tracing. I did tell you before that, you know, when our numbers were really, really high, we went to a crisis standard to contact trace. We are now back to our original contact tracing. So we are having contact with the positive case. We're doing a full interview to identify all of their close contacts. And then we're doing an interview with each one of those close contacts. So we're back to that full contact tracing, which is a good thing. But certainly, the amount of positives that we're getting is allowing us to do that. Lastly, vaccinations, which I know is a kind of a hot topic these days, if you will. As of yesterday and partial today, we've given out 8,300 vaccinations here in Portage County. Our public health staff have given out 953 of those. The rest of those have been given out by the various medical systems and some of the pharmacies. We have been requesting 200 new doses. So these are just new doses. We request 200 new doses a week. Last week, we received 55. This week, we were fortunate enough to receive 100. We are ready at Public Health to expand the number of vaccines that we will give. We have another full vaccination team set and ready to go once the vaccine becomes available. The crux of the matter truly is is that there's not enough vaccine in this state. We have, right now, we know that there's over 300,000 requests for vaccine across the state on a weekly basis. The state's getting approximately about 85,000 doses. So that's in a nutshell. The state has their own formula as to who gets what amount of vaccine. You know, we have had these conversations. We were on a call this afternoon with the state talking about this very topic. So, you know, we know that there's more people that want the vaccine than we have vaccine to give. It is certainly our goal, and the goal, I think, of all the vaccinators here in the county, we want to put it in as many arms as people that want to get it. So with that, I would take any questions that you have tonight.
Did Chris have anything to add?
I'm not sure.
Hold on, Ray. Chris Holman, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, and sorry if you hear my son. My wife and family are running the election tonight, so I'm here at home. But in any case, I just wanted to add to Ray's comments there. You know, Corey had reached out with a question for the town hall. And so he and I have been communicating on his questions most of this week. And certainly with the health and HHS and others. And I just want to double down on the explanation in the sense that we're very aware of the shortage of vaccines. And we communicate it to DHS multiple times a week because we're on we're on the line with we're on the line with not only DHS, but the perk region, you know, speaking with our partners there. And because we're collaborating with not only the hospitals, who also have long lists of people wanting the vaccine, but they are also getting shorted doses delivered. We're communicating with other state agencies, local EMS, and basically doing everything we can to shine a light on the issue. But I also want to dispel the notion that what's happening here is necessarily all that different from what we're seeing elsewhere in Wisconsin or even the entire United States. You know, the media has been covering this quite a bit lately, where mass clinics are shutting down or narrowing operations just because they're not getting consistent or predictable vaccine. But yeah, so other than that, I think Ray covered much of the bases there well. I think, as he noted, we have a lot of robust planning in place. It's ready to go. It's just a matter of waiting to get the doses. And I will also say that DHS was on the news this week. And the person who was speaking said that the deliveries are kind of commensurate with local capacity to administer them. But I would just contest that and say that if that were true, then we wouldn't be getting shorted doses as well. If for some reason, it was an issue of capacity. Because we have the capacity, we just don't have the supply.
Thank you. Ray, was there something with one of the hospitals getting approved for shots later in the game? Was Ascension late in getting?
Well, all of our medical systems have, you know, have been approved to give vaccinations. You know, it's just really the amount of vaccinations that they directly receive. I will tell you that, you know, Ascension receives, St. Michael's receives vaccination directly from the state, whereas Aspiris and Marshfield Clinic do not because it is sent to basically their home, if you will. So that's Wausau Hospital and Marshfield Clinic. And then they get their allocations from that. But, you know, everyone, you know, is active in the sense of they're more than willing to give the vaccines, but they can only give what they receive.
Thank you. Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, you know, regarding why the numbers are so low for a county. My wife signed up probably three weeks ago on the official Aspiris Get Your Vaccine site and has yet to have even a courtesy call back. She tried to get something through Ascension where we're regular patients. And it's crickets over there, too. And then she tried to sign up for a vaccine at Walgreens and on their great, you know, fabulous website for vaccination. And COVID was not even listed in the list of, would you like a flu vaccine, or would you like this or that? And it was not even possible to sign up, right? So I guess that debunks the notion that the private sector or the non-governmental organization sector are any more on the ball than the governmental organization sector. That's just my comment.
Ray, with Walgreens, is there 180 in the state of Wisconsin that are being approved to be able to administer?
That is correct. So, you know, approximately 180 Walgreens across the state of Wisconsin have been approved. They are getting their vaccine directly from the federal government. That's not coming from the allotment to the state of Wisconsin. So, you know, it's approximately, I think there was 183. So like 18,000 shots a week will be given out by Walgreens. Their target is for the 65 and over population.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mine is kind of a two-part situation. First, for Executive Holman, sounds like your son is going to be a fine public speaker.
Yeah, thanks.
Secondly, Ray, is anybody tracking reinfection rates? I'm hearing of some reinfections happening, and I'm wondering if that is being tracked and/or if it's the truth.
Well, and again, you know, the state, you know, when this first came up about people being reinfected, you know, the state had not confirmed that that was happening. So, you know, the latest, what's coming out of the CDC, which was just late last week in regards to the effect of immunity after you get that shot, that seems to be a real hot topic. But, you know, we have not seen any reinfections here in Portage County.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski, then Supervisor Pataki.
Ray, I've heard of some educators that aren't over 65 in other counties getting shots that the counties had exhausted their, forgive me for not knowing the steps, 1B, 1C, whatever, and then were actually going on to the next step. Is that happening? And if that's happening, why aren't those being redirected to counties that are still on the step before that?
Well, I think to answer the second part of that question, I think anyone that gets vaccine is going to try to find an arm to put it in and not redirect it to others that are still, you know. When we're talking about those phases, you know, the CDC and the state have kind of said, we're not going to deal with that anymore, just eligible people. Tomato, tomato. But at the end of the day, you know, we know that, you know, in Portage County, we've gotten like 24, I think it's right around 24% of everyone 65 and over vaccinated. So we're heading in that direction. You know, I'll tell you, I was on a call this afternoon where, you know, we know that there's a shortage of vaccine. We know that the state has said that as of March 1, educators, daycare providers, frontline grocery workers and things like that all become eligible. We said, okay, but we don't have the vaccine. What are we going to do? They said, we're still going to say they're eligible. We're just going to say they're probably not going to get it for a month. Okay, that's kind of a tough thing to tell people, but that's just where we're at.
And I know that I've been on a lot of calls with Ray, and one of the comments was that I had made was the person who's giving the shots at the end of the day, because we have Pfizer and it has a lot of limitations to it, comes out of the freezer, we've got five days to use it. We start to use it, you got five hours to use it, and it's expired. When they get towards the end, I wanted to make sure that the people that are giving the shots knew that they had the ability that if they've got a few shots left and there's nobody there, don't waste it. And I've heard that they've got a list and they're making calls to people that we need to get you down here. And at some point, we're not wasting or throwing away any of those shots because they're expired. People are getting shots, and we're just trying to use up what we have to make sure none of it goes to waste, it all gets used.
That's right, that's right, Al.
Supervisor Pataki, then Supervisor Astro. Don't forget to unmute. Don't forget to unmute, Stan.
If anybody gets a shot like on February 3, and they're scheduled to get another shot on March 4, what are the chances that there won't be a vaccine?
That's a great question, Stan. And really, when we're talking about the shortage, it's on the new vaccine. So if you got a shot on February 3 and your next shot is scheduled March 3, that booster shot or secondary shot will be there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Supervisor Astro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Shabelski, I'm just curious. You're saying that the testing numbers are down, but yet we're having an 18% positivity rate, which is high, I think regardless of however many tests you do. And is that trending that way still? Or is that because, you know, and can we relate that to possibly lack of mask wearing?
Well, I think there's two things there. That 18% positivity rate was through January, so that those numbers hold. Where we're at in February, I really can't tell you. I think that, you know, I think that people, you know, aren't getting tested for, you know, you know, maybe there's just less of it in our community, and that could very well be true. But, you know, we're not seeing that overall in the state. The positivity percentage is dropping. I believe that when I saw the state figures, it's actually less than 10% now of all the people getting tested. So I would anticipate, you know, for the month of February, we'll see that with our testing as well.
Supervisor Dave Lattick.
I have one question for you. You mentioned before that you ordered 200 shots, you get 55. You order 200, you get 100. Why just you don't order 2,000 and see what you get?
You know, Dave, we talked about that. And honestly, you know, I mean, we have to be able to order what our capacity is. And honestly, because we know if we ordered 2,000, we were probably going to get 55. And we were going to get 100. Truly, we have to see the amount of available vaccine go up. And when it does, we are prepared to go immediately up to 300 to 400 doses a week because we're going to introduce our Saturday clinics, and we know that we can handle that amount of vaccine, new shots per week, knowing full well that in four or three weeks for us, because we get the Pfizer vaccine, you're doubling that.
Supervisor Maresi. Don't forget to unmute.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that. Thanks for the reminder. And thank you, Director Shabelski. I'm concerned about the positivity rate in the state. I'm happy that it's going down. I am worried about the variants that's coming into the state. Have we had any of the variant strains affecting people in Portage County?
No, we have not. So far, there's been the two variants identified. One was in Waukesha County, one was in Eau Claire County. You know, we were on a call this morning that, you know, because we hear about the South African variant, we hear about the UK variant, we hear about the Brazilian variant, you know, and all these are new. You know, the state is stepping up their procedures that in their lab, that, you know, when they're getting a positive COVID, they're trying to look to see if it is possibly one of the variants. But so far, those only two have been identified in the state, and we have not had any here in Portage County.
That's great. If I may, I have a follow-up with that, too. My concern with the variant, if it is starting to spread through the state and the legislature decides to clear out the mask mandate, I'm curious if Portage County has anything in store to enforce or to propose a mask mandate for Portage County. Obviously, that is the best way to prevent this spread of the disease. And now we're wearing two masks, I understand, because the variant is transmissible. Just another question, or this is getting a lot of feedback right now. I think it's a microphone that's picking up my voice and then spreading it back into the feed here. So if I sound choppy, I apologize.
Well, so to
Please go ahead.
So to answer your question, Supervisor Maresi, is that, you know, we know that currently there is a statewide mask mandate through the order of the governor. We do know that there are challenges in the Supreme Court, and we certainly don't know what the legislature is going to do at any given time. But with that being said, if it is known void, you know, we are ready to go with a version of that here in Portage County.
And will that version be a mandate or an advisory recommendation?
Well, you know, the key to anything is enforcement. And enforcement is always a difficult thing when it comes to issues like this, no different than what's going on today. I mean, there's a statewide face covering mandate. You don't see a lot of enforcement around that. You know, we anticipate that we will see that even if the state mandate goes away, there's going to be local businesses that are going to still post that they require face coverings before entering in. I think people enter the building without it because, again, that's enforcement. But ours would be advisory, to answer your question.
Supervisor Saik, then Supervisor Neville.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, Ray, what are we doing to work with the Stevens Point School District to get the kids back in the classroom full-time?
Well, you know, we meet with the school district on a regular basis. I think our next meeting with them is, we met with them last week. And we meet with all of our districts, you know, so we do that about twice a month. So, you know, I can't speak directly for the school district. You know, we're working with them on trying to get, you know, once March 1 comes, trying to get them vaccinated again. That's not going to be on March 1 because of that availability. I think that specifically, I don't want to speak for the Stevens Point School District, but I think that they're trying to look at getting their staff, including, you know, their food staff, their bus drivers and things like that vaccinated before they return to the five-day-a-week or four-day-a-week education at the secondary level. We know that the elementary level is currently four days a week.
Supervisor Neville.
As to the issue of enforcement, I feel as county board supervisors, it's important for us to set a good example. And right now, there are two people in the room who typically have masks, Chair Haggett and Mr. Jakowski, who don't have them on. And I think as time goes on, it's easy for us, if somebody has to talk, to take it off and then forget to put it back on. But I think we really need to focus on doing it and keeping it on. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Ande.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I received my first shot last week. It was one of the last ones, for a good idea, to stay on the end. But I asked the providers as to how they were doing. And they said they have put in 59 shots that day. And unfortunately, many of the recipients were very abusive, loud, and obnoxious. That's a roughie of putting it. It's my word, not theirs. They said they have learned to put up with that. Nobody should have to put up with that, especially when they're trying to help you and they're on the bottom of the food chain. They're not the decision makers. They're not the ones who are providing the numbers that each county gets or each municipality gets. So I would urge my fellow colleagues, as well as anybody who is listening, the least you can do is say thank you and to be nice and spread the word around to treat these people, they don't need any more pressure than I have, and then they already have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Above all, be nice, all the time. Anybody else, any other supervisors? If not, I'm going to take executive privilege here and let Citizen Corey Lattick speak, Ray.
Okay. Well, thank you for, you know, asking me to speak. I kind of stumbled into all of this, really was just looking at some numbers. And it seemed like it was pretty clear that Portage County isn't getting its fair share. I know it was mentioned by county staff that, you know, there simply isn't enough vaccine in the state. And I think that everyone would agree with that. That definitely matches what we all know. But I do, looking at these numbers, I do still see another piece of that, which is that there isn't an equitable distribution in the state. We're not the only county that has this issue. I know that Milwaukee County also has a similar issue. They are being vocal about it. You have the county executive from Milwaukee County has, you know, stood up and expressed some of his concerns about the inequitable distribution. What we're seeing, you know, as far as Portage County and looking right at the Department of Health Services website here, you know, the state average is 12.5% of the Wisconsin population has received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. That's 8.8% for Portage County. So basically, that's about 70% of the state average. I do, you know, and I'm more of a number I, I do, you know, and I'm more of a numbers guy than a public health guy. But as a numbers guy, I, I do see that as a significant variation. Also, looking at how we're moving through the current phase, which is the sixty-five-plus population, you can also get that data on the Department of Health Services website. Right now, the state is at an average of forty point four percent for the sixty-five-plus. Portage County is again at twenty-eight point seven percent, which is seventy-one percent of the state average. So basically saying that, okay, how, how are we progressing through this phase? The data that I'm seeing appears to very strongly indicate that Portage County is progressing slower than many other counties in the state. And then also to kind of tie it all together, again, what I'm seeing in the data, and this is all online, there, there was a question about counties moving on to the next phase. And, you know, I've noticed that there are some counties that their sixty-five-plus population, they're at over sixty percent vaccination coverage already. So for those counties, I was actually thinking about this the other day, looking at the data, you know, we've got some counties that have gotten enough vaccine where they're ready to move on to the next phase already. They've covered almost their entire sixty-five-plus population, of course, understanding that not everyone is going to want the vaccine. And, you know, we've got others that are probably going to be ready to move into the next phase more first, if they're moving with the state average. And it looks like Portage County might be a little bit behind there. Just if you think about those, all those numbers, you know, sixty percent coverage, forty percent coverage, twenty-eight point seven. So I, I do, looking at the data, I do think there's an issue here. Like I said, I don't think that it's the county's fault. But I think it's something that we need to let the, the state know that we are paying attention and we do need to be able to, to talk about that, because I think it's going to be really hard to advocate something for something, you know, if we're not able to, to talk about it and talk about some of the inequities and we need to catch up. So those are just my thoughts.
Okay. If there's nothing else, thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Public notice. Members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their request at this time, with such comment subject to reasonable control of the county board chair set forth in Roberts Rules of Order. Anybody from the public? Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak to. I just need it for the, for the record. I'll call on you when it comes up.
My name's Aline Kozloski and I want to speak about that Health and Human Services that we just listened to.
Hmm, we don't really know that. We don't have it on the agenda. Go, go ahead, go ahead. I'll allow you to speak now.
Thank you.
And yes, are you going to be able to do it within three minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Could you state your name again, please, and the spelling?
Yep. My name is Aline Kozloski. That's K-O-S-L-O-S-K-I. First name A-L-I-N-E.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I live in this community. I'm a property owner, pay taxes. I understand that there is a concern that you guys have, a lot of you have, as far as availability of the vaccine. However, my concern is that once everybody has had their share of the vaccine, you are going to turn your eyes on requiring the rest of us who do not want it to have it. Okay, shake your head. Well, hopefully you don't, because I'm not taking the vaccine and neither is my children. I have a brother and a sister who both work in health. My sister's a nurse. My brother works in a care home. They both have had the vaccine. Each one, my brother had one version, my sister had the other, and they both had very severe side effects. Now, you know, when you get a vaccine, like measles, mumps, rubella, you know, you take your kids to get vaccines. I'm not an anti-vaxer. I took my kids to get their vaccinations when they were babies. They all had their vaccinations. You get a little sheet that says the side effects that they may have. The side effects are supposed to be few and far between, not common. The side effects of the vaccine that you guys all want are pretty severe, in my opinion, and I don't want it. You can have the vaccine if you want, but don't try to force it on us. I don't think it's, I don't, I don't think it's good. It takes years to develop a vaccine, not months, and I do not trust it. Also Supervisor Ressi, wanting to push for a mask advisory or mandate, there's going to be a pushback from the community. Some of us do not feel that the mask works, because it doesn't. Previously, we were told, oh, wear a mask, it'll help. Now it's wear two masks. What's next? A biohazard suit to go shopping? I don't agree with, and I'm at two minutes right now. So here's what I propose, and this is what I've been saying for a while. Those of you who are concerned about your health can stay home, let the rest of us live our lives the way we want to. I'm not going to take, I'm not going to take a vaccine. I'm not going to let my children, and I'll be darned if you make that a requirement for them to go to school. You should open up schools five days a week, not four, not three, not two, not one, five days a week. My children deserve a proper education. So that's basically my stance. Take what you want from it. I'm not trying to be difficult, but a lot of us do feel this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else from the public that wanted to speak? All right. Confirmation of county executives' appointments. Reappointment of Sunshine Pukals to the library board for a three-year term expiring January thirty-first, 2024. If there's no objections, I'll take both of these in one motion. Any objections? The next reappointment is Scott Poplinsky to the Veterans Service Commission for a three-year term expiring December eighteenth, 2023. I'll take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Gifford, seconded by Supervisor Honle. Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Number ten. Confirmation of the Executive Operations Committee's appointment. Appointing Gary Kerlis to the Executive Operations Committee as a citizens member for ethics-related matters for a two-year term expiring April eighteenth, 2022, to replace Jim Clark, who has passed away. Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Lattick. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolutions. Number eleven. Town of New Hope Comprehensive Plan Amending the Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendments Trinsky Property.
Resolution number seventy-nine, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a plan amendment and zoning ordinance map amendment for the Trinsky property.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Merle. Discussion. All, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve. Town of Belmont Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment. Children's Outing Association Property.
Resolution number eighty, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a plan amendment and zoning ordinance map amendment for the Children's Outing Association Property.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen. Town of Stockton Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment. Anderson O'Brien Law Firm for NDS Properties LLC property.
Resolution number eighty-one, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a plan amendment and zoning ordinance map amendment for the Anderson O'Brien Law Firm for NDS Properties.
Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Matt Jakowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number fourteen. Revision of Portage County Ordinance four point one, or I'm sorry, four point seven solid waste and four point eight recycling.
Resolution number eighty-two, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Solid Waste Management Board. This resolution amends the Portage County ordinances four point seven and four point eight for solid waste and recycling.
Motion by Zastro, seconded by Maresi. Discussion. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Mr. Chair, I guess. Mr. Chair, I guess I would like someone from the committee to explain to me why we need this. We run a fleet of heavy trucks year-round. The secure load law has been in force for many, many decades here in Wisconsin, and it is regulated by trained officers who are well-versed in the law. I, I see no need for the county to have some sort of regulation being enforced by people who may not be well-versed in a secure load law. In that being said, I, 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 I don't see the need for that. Also in it, we talk about, I believe it is on page, I guess it isn't on a page, but it's under violations and penalties, the red on that page, which again, aren't numbered.
Four point
It talks about
Barry, four point eight eight?
Four point eight eight, yes. In fact, it's the last page of the, before the actual
Yep.
end of the, the changes here. We talk about people inspecting our trash. Am I correct in that? I, I, it's, it's kind of vague as to who's going to be collecting, or excuse me, inspecting trash, where they're going to be inspecting it. I, I just have some concerns about it. Maybe somebody from the committee could explain it to me.
Supervisor Maresi, can you help us with this?
Yes, I'd be happy to. If, if Amanda is on, and she feel, please feel free to jump into this as well. And Attorney Ray, I know, helped Amanda write the language for this, for this change. Basically, what we're, we're asking is that we have some enforceable language to allow the solid waste director or the person running the scale to, oh, Amanda is there, fantastic. I will be quiet, because she is the professional. Thank you.
Okay, so for your concerns, the reason we want an unsecured load fee isn't becau, is for many reasons. We can't have someone from the sheriff's office at our property twenty-four-seven. It's, it just can't happen. We have loads that come in that are rocking and are falling off daily. Myself, my staff, the people who work at our transfer facility and at the MRF, get calls regularly from the residents and the farmers in the area to clean up the garbage that is on the roadway from everyone coming into our facility. And so it was the board's decision, excuse me, decision about five years ago to do a policy that if you come to our facility without a covered load, we're going to charge you ten dollars. We have that policy. It's been in place for five years. And I thought it was time that we made it an ordinance and have a little extra beef meat behind it, because we do have some of those haulers that come in frequently without any cover over their large thirty, forty-yard roll-off containers. We have residents who come in with teeter-tottering loads of refrigerators and pallets, and we wanted more teeth to it. So ten dollars, it's a slap on the wrist. And so we thought, ten dollars for your first time, twenty dollars, and then we're going to charge you thirty, maybe fifty dollars, maybe. Or we're just going to reject you altogether. And if we rejected, say, one of those haulers who are coming in with those teeter-tot loads, then it would stop. And so that's, that's the reasoning behind having it in the ordinance. As for the actual penalties and enforcement in four point seven point four two, we mirrored that off of four point eight point eight, I believe it is, for recycling. The four point eight point eight is in state statute. That's what we need to have in our recycling ordinance. We just cleaned it up a little bit and we took verbatim what was in state statute and put it into our ordinance here. And then we mirrored that to the solid waste ordinance, because we thought, why have multiple different penalties and just make it clean and easy? So it says under three A, four point seven point one seven is specific to the unsecured load. It doesn't mean for your first offense, we're going to charge you up to fifty dollars. Doesn't mean we're going to charge you two thousand dollars, but it's got some meat in there to hopefully scare people into doing the right thing. I, I came from Western Wisconsin. I did a lot of enforcement that way.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Oh, and pardon me, is, is your name Amanda?
Yes, sorry.
Amanda, is your staff well-versed and been trained in secured load laws?
We have not, not yet, no.
Uh, I don't believe anybody, for the body, I don't believe anybody who hasn't been trained in a secured load law should be
I, I don't thi, I don't think they're talking about hauling a, a cat loader down the road. I think they're just
Doesn't, doesn't make any difference. It's under a secured load law. And when you say it's meant to scare people, when you put that in, in an ordinance, it could be. So don't say, well, we're not going to, because you could
Could, yes.
Under this ordinance. So don't say
Where, Barry, where are you referring to secured load law?
Uh, they mention it right here on, again, pages aren't numbered, forgive me. The second page of the, after definition.
What's the ordinance number?
Uh, doesn't say. It just, it's in red.
I see it, I see it.
Secured load law.
Yep.
It's
Been, been in force for many, many years. We deal with it on a daily basis in our business. I don't believe that anybody who isn't trained and isn't a law enforcement officer should be dealing out whether a load is secure or not. We, we train our law enforcement officers for a reason. They're versed in the laws. They know what the laws are. I don't believe that someone who is, well, I'm going to decide that because I don't happen to like you as a hauler, I don't like the way you treated me the last time, you haven't got enough chains or nets or whatever you need to be. I, I believe we have a statewide secured load law, which should cover this. I, I don't believe we, as a county, need that.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry, Barry. Please, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay, Vinnie. Go ahead. We might as well deal with it one issue at a time.
Can you show me, can you show me where it says secure load law? I'm trying to find it in the ordinance language.
It just says secured loads. It just, it's under definitions.
Yeah.
The second page, so it's, it's, uh, it's in red as a definition, Barry, is, is what is a secured load. It doesn't say anything about law.
Right. I was, I was referring to it that there is a secured load law.
Okay.
Yeah, this isn't a law. This is an ordinance and it's, it's meant to prevent a lot of our haulers that come in. I would say the vast majority of the haulers that do come in are doing the right thing. I'm sorry. I don't know what that was, but I'm, so our, the vast majority of our haulers are doing a great job. They're putting a tarp over things, they're tying things down, but there are people out there that just roll in and they may not know the rule. So are those folks going to get a ten-dollar fine for their first time and it's their only time ever coming to the, the MRF? Probably not unless things are falling out. But we do have haulers out there that are showing up time and time and time again and they disregard our, our secure load requirements, because a ten-dollar fee to them is, is worth paying, because it takes, to do a good job securing a load down, it's going to take your person who's driving your truck and running those, running it, it's going to take them, you know, fifteen minutes to do that. That's ten dollars' worth of their pay, right? So they'd rather pay the fine than actually, you know, secure the load. So what this is meant to do is just make, make the haulers accountable for their actions. I think we're probably not going to give out very many fines on this. Amanda, you could probably tell us on your hand how many times we've done it. But it's, it's meant to give it a little teeth, make sure, make sure that we're following best practice as community members dropping stuff off at our MRF. And, but it has nothing, it doesn't reference the load law in Wisconsin. Nobody's asking for us to, you know, chain down your, you know, law in Wisconsin. Nobody's asking what, you know, chain down your, you know, little bit of refuse that's in the back of your, your truck or whatever. It's, make sure it's not blown around. Thank you very much.
Barry, did you have more?
I did. Vinnie, and maybe it, it sounds like you're well-versed in this, that on the committee, when we come under four point eight point eight violations and penalties, the paragraph is numbered number one. For the purpose of ascertaining compliance with the provisions of this ordinance, any authorized officer, employee, or representative of the solid waste director, solid waste site coordinator, the Portage County Sheriff's Office, or their designee, may inspect recyclable materials separated for recycling, post-consumer waste intended for disposal, recycling collection sites and facilities, collection vehicles, collection areas of municipal family dwellings, or excuse me, multiple family dwellings and non-residential facilities and properties, and any records related to those recycling activities, which shall be kept confidential when necessary to protect proprietary information. No person may refuse access to any authorized officer, employee, or authorized representative of the solid waste director, solid waste site coordinator, the Portage County Sheriff's Office, or their designee who requests access for purpose of inspection and who present appropriate credentials. No person may obstruct, hamper, or interfere with such an inspection. What are we inspecting, Vinnie?
That would be, I'm not punting here. That is some serious legal ease right there, and I am not a lawyer. So I think we could ask Attorney Ray, because he did have a hand in helping to formulate this, this ordinance. If he could help decipher that, that's legal.
David, are you with us this evening?
Yep, he's on there. Yes, I had to unmute myself.
Remind you.
I'm here.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the laundry list of the people that we say are authorized to inspect. Amanda can probably tell us, because she's the boots on the ground there, as to what it is that's likely to be inspected.
Go ahead, Amanda.
Sure. So it is a law to recycle in the state of Wisconsin, and the state statute gives the solid waste management board the authority to inspect to make sure for compliance. And a part of that is the solid waste management board can expect, can inspect for compliance, but they can also designate somebody else. And in this case, they are designating myself, my staff, and the sheriff's department, office to do that.
Amanda, what are they inspecting, or what do they look, what would need them to?
So if I get a call from an apartment owner saying they don't have recycling at my facility, I go and I would check to see, do they have a recycling dumpster and a trash dumpster? And if they do, I open the lid of the recycling dumpster to see, yes, there's recycling in there. It's not trash. And then I would follow up with the, with the person. If we get, and that's basically what we inspect for. It's on a per-call basis, and it's generally from multifamily residences or smaller, or, or a little bit larger.
So in that case, who would be held responsible? The apartment owner? You know, because I, I look at it that I've been, and I've had people tell me that they've been to gatherings, and they've had a recyclable bin and a trash bin. And everything is in the trash can, and hardly anything is in the recyclable. And, you know, you're holding somebody accountable for someone else's action or the public's access to that.
So state law requires that four units or less is considered residential. So if it's a fourplex or less, it is the responsibility of that resident to have their own recycling collected and separated. If it's five or more, it's the responsibility of the landlord to offer recycling and trash, and that they give out recycling information yearly, at least, to their residents to make sure it is separated properly. So it would be held accountable to the landlord if it's five or more, or to the individual residents if it's four or less, unless it states specifically in their lease that it's the landlord's responsibility.
Mr. Chair, if I may follow up.
I'm, are we good? Lee?
I think so.
We keep getting feedback on this side, and I think we know where it's coming from. Supervisor Gifford's been waiting. I'm going to let him go, and then I'll come back to you, Barry.
Thank you.
Yeah, a question, I guess, for Director Amanda. Is the, I'm sure you probably thought about if we're going to have staff doing the enforcement, the enforcement piece of this, then that would imply that you will have a training session, or several, right, to train people what the secured law, load law requires, and how to spot a secure load versus an unsecured load, and avoid the, you know, the, the nemesis of people being arbitrary or enforcing things just out of, you know, some vendetta or something against a hauler that they don't like. I mean, and, you know, you could collaborate with the, with the sheriff's department and our corporate council's office, and, you know, people that are, people that are heavy hauler experts, and, you know, do a two-day training, and I think you'd address most of that concern. Am I right?
That would be correct, yeah. If this would go into, if you guys pass this tonight, we'll definitely do some training on our end to make sure that my staff and our designee, our scale attendant, understand exactly what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski, then Supervisor Salk.
I would defer to Supervisor Salk at this time, and.
Supervisor Salk.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So am I correct in what I heard about this already being state law and under state statute?
Part of this is. So the secure load, uncovered load fee is not in, in state statute, but the fees in four point eight point eight are.
Okay.
And we just mirrored them to the solid waste portion.
Okay, thank you. And what is the fine in Portage County for illegal dumping in our parks, our roadside ditches? We, we have a lot of that going on, particularly on my road where we have county parks along the river. We always have the refrigerators, we, we have the, the garbage, the couches, the entertainment centers, the TVs. So what is the fine in Portage County for that? And are we creating an unintended consequence? If we only count on one hand how many times a fine has been levied already, are we creating an unintended consequence here of people saying, okay, well, I'm going to get fined a hundred dollars, or I could take this to the park, take my chances, dump it off, and only get fifty dollar fine? And again, if we're only doing this a handful of times in, in your tenure, is this really something that's needed? The last point I would like covered is designee. If we're going to pass this, I don't have a problem with the sheriff's department, and I don't have a problem with the director of the facility. These are, these are people that are put in place that have some accountability. As Chris Holman says, there is accountability, and it's through him. Site coordinators and/or their designees, I have a bit of, I, I have even more so of a problem with that type of language versus a sheriff's deputy or a director. So these are, these are things that prior to getting this passed, I, I would like to have the answers to before I can make a determination on a vote. We've only handed out a handful of fines. That's what Supervisor Maresi said. You can count them on one hand. How many people do you have coming through on a day, weekly basis, to where we've only handed out a handful of fines? I would have to think as a percentage. That is so minute, it doesn't even register. So, and again, what is the fine for illegal dumping in the county, and how is that aligned with what you have here?
So I'm not sure what it is in county parks. If it happens, and it's the solid waste department's issue, you can see in four point seven point two four, the language that was struck out. Not less than fifty dollars and not more than five hundred dollars plus court costs. That's the language that we have currently in our solid waste ordinance if you're caught littering and all of that. I can't tell you what had happened before I got here, but last year before our camera system went down, we issued around thirty unsecured load fees, because that's what we call them right now, unsecure, if you're, I'm sorry, uncovered load fees. That's what we call them right now internally. And it's ten dollars each. So we did about thirty before our camera system went down in about November. We do ask if, we, we can generally tell if you're honestly, your first time at our facility, because they are clueless. No offense to anybody for your first time, but you really don't know what's going on. And so we generally waive that, that uncovered load fee. The reason why we say designee is because I don't run the scale. That's, that's not something I can do all day. We're open seven-thirty until three o'clock. So my designee, I would give the power to the scale attendant to give that ten dollar fine, because he or she is the one who is seeing, okay, there's definitely, it's rocking. And so they, they put it on their scale ticket. Residents have called and said, hey, no, I really did have some straps on there. And then we go back to the footage on the camera, and once in a while, sure enough, we just didn't see the straps. We take the fee off and we return them the money. So there are checks and balances. If people completely disagree with it, with it, we check our camera system. And that's why I said, before our cameras went down, we, we gave out about thirty. We haven't done any of this since, because I have no proof on the camera any longer.
Supervisor Madine. Supervisor Madine, you need to unmute. We are getting feedback from yours, and you, we've been muting you. Can you un?
I can send a request, but.
And if I may add, I don't know if I completely answered your question now that I think about it. Before this came into a policy internally within our department, the village of Clover was getting complaints left and right because of all the trash that was on the roadway. And they approached us about five, six years ago, saying, hey, get your act together, make sure these companies are clo, are covered, because we're tired of picking up all of this stuff. And that's why about five years ago, they decided internally to do this covered load fee of ten dollars. And most people comply with it. They're really good. It's just there's some sticklers out there that we wanted to add some teeth to it, to make it secure.
Supervisor Madine, go ahead.
I think I'm okay now. Is it okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. There is another consideration, and that is that we have a conditional use permit from the village of Clover to operate that. And that permit, of course, is when we started, when we went in there years and years ago. As a, a member of the solid waste board, they have kept an eye on this to make sure that we adhere to the provision that states that we are to operate in a nuisance-free fashion. And so we need to, we, we need to adhere to that, or that they can put some pressure on for us to adhere to that conditional, condition in order to continue operation. Therefore, I would like to see us pass this as we have proposed it. If there are any problems with the enforcement, I, I think the executive is in a very good position to work with his staff to make sure that that is enforced properly.
Thank you. Dave, we need you to mute yourself again. There you go. Thank you. We're getting feedback from yours for some reason. Amanda, you'd said some people came in the first time, violators, and, and you knew that they were oblivious to it. Do they get a warning so that you know that they've been cited at least the first time, so that when they come the second time?
Yes, they get a warning, and we tell them, you could have been charged an additional ten dollars. So the next time, please have the.
Have you ever issued one for five hundred dollars?
Never. It's only been ten dollars because that's, we set our fee every year, and so the solid waste board approves that fee yearly. And we haven't brought it to the board to raise it until recently.
So in the current policy, and I, I believe I was probably the chair when it was committed, when it was created, was that it was, it was fifty dollars and then up to five hundred dollars. So, but you wanted it, this new one you created was to give it some teeth, yet you never used it, and you had said that there were many people who were violating it, yet you never exercised the ability to go to five hundred. And then this new one, you're asking for up to two thousand, which is, is a hefty amount. I'm wondering if there's the ability to compromise with some of that. And I don't know if Vinnie or anybody else or Dave would like to, or Matt would like to chime in, or anybody else, but. Separate issue. Sheriff? By the way, do you know what it is for littering, what the fine is?
Yes, I do. The law's fine amount, now, now, we're talking about fines for county ordinances. I think we're getting a little construed here, because in, in the county ordinance book, if it's a ten dollar fine, it's about two hundred and some dollar fine because of court costs. So there's a little bit more to look at in regards to this, not only for, you know, right now, they're, they're charging ten dollars on a load fee, but if it's a ten dollar fee, there's going to be court costs associated with a fine. So when you look at the county ordinance schedule, I believe it'd be, I think, I want to say it's over two hundred dollars for the first time, then it's subsequent more for illegal dumping. But yes, there has to be training in regards to citations, because we do the pre-trials. So, I mean, they have to be done correctly, and there has to also be the court costs involved in regards to the fine. So I just wanted to mention that because we're overlooking, saying we can just issue a ten dollar citation, which we, I don't think we can. I think there has to be associated court costs to that also.
So does Amanda have the authority that, I mean, as far as a citation, do they have a citation book, the same that the officers have?
Right now, they don't.
If, if, how do they, if they were writing out citations before for ten dollars or whatever, what were you writing those on, Amanda?
We don't call them citations. It's just a ten dollar uncovered load fee.
Yeah, they, they add it on to the fee. This would enact, similar to what Humane Society does right now, for, for enforcement. It would also, I'm trying to think anybody else, Parks Department has authority in the parks to issue citations. So, but I'm just saying, there's a schedule to it, so make sure we're aware of that.
So because they're calling it a citation, is, is there any way it goes against the points on a person's license, or any of the rest of that, then?
No, this is a county ordinance, and the one thing that is different in regards to the county ordinance is that fee, that fine comes back to the county, unlike our state statute for unsecured loads under the three forty-six area for driving. Those go to the state, which we don't get any kind of money back in regards to if it's not a county ordinance. So that, that is one difference in regards to giving some authority to the county under a county ordinance for collecting of fines. Those fees do come back to the county, then.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Couple things. First thing, the scale attendant, is that a county employee?
Currently not.
Amanda, is it, is it ever, or is it intended to be? Isn't, don't they work for?
As far, they currently work for our operator. That's part of the contract. They have to provide that scale attendant.
I may see a little issue if somebody decides to fight a citation. Is our operator willing to have their employee attend court? You know, there, there may be some issues with our operating contract, and all of a sudden, we're having them issue a citation. That's a little different than a load fee. That, that's one issue I have. Another issue I have, as we read through this, it talks about that the solid waste director, site coordinator, Portage County Sheriff's Office, blah, 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 blah. In, on, under four point eight eight, number one there, it says have the ability to, to go into areas of multifamily dwellings, non-residential facilities, and properties. Before they go into someone's private property, are they getting a warrant?
That's what the, that whole ordinance states.
So Amanda, now that particular part.
That they'll be getting, oh, excuse me.
Is that part of the state statute that you were, you were in?
So four point eight point eight is yes. But if you, if we go through our entire solid waste ordinance, there is a portion in the very top that says that, that is not a part of this, because I didn't change it. And so I only gave you the changes to our ordinance, which is like twenty pages long with all the changes. It says that we do need to follow that warrant process.
Okay, because, because that's concerning. That was, that wasn't showing up here, and that would have been nice to have that for background. The other thing is that this references four point eight two. I, I don't see four point eight two here. And the other thing, now, we're looking at, at four point seven one seven. And actually, I'm going to bounce back and forth here, because this bounces back and forth. But under four point seven two four, it says number three, penalties for violating this ordinance may be assessed as follows. Any person who violates ordinance four point seven one seven, so I look back at four point seven one seven, that's the vehicle regulations. So that is harping, covered load, securing your load. And it says any person who violates four one seven may be required to forfeit fifty dollars for the first violation. And it says any person who violates four one seven may be required to forfeit fifty dollars for the first violation. Now, as I understand that, that's not fifty dollars. That's turned into a much higher amount with court costs, correct?
Well, it's depending on that's the fine. Depending on what the fine is, what the court costs to proceed. So you'd have to look at the county ordinance schedule for what the fine and court costs would be included.
Well, I would like to know true cost because if we're going to start charging somebody fifty dollars and let's say there's another hundred and twenty on there for court costs. A lot of times the court cost is more than the actual fine when you look at, at the breakdown. I worry about somebody saying, well, hell, I got charged a hundred and seventy-five dollars because I didn't have a secure load. It was the second time my strap fell off, I forgot. Next time, they're going to take it out in my district on the Buena Vista Marsh and kick it in the ditch. I would rather see this as an education piece than teeth. Anytime in county government when we have to start putting teeth in something, it gets a little scary because now we've, we've turned that person off from ever using the MRF, ever using the, the transfer facility again. And I understand there, there's leeway for the scale attendant or who's ever enforcing it to say, well, yeah, have a nice day. Maybe the person that came in is a, a different type of personality, maybe a little drop in, says something, fine, we're giving you the fine. That's all there is to it. We're going to give you the fine. And you could shake your head all you want, but that happened. So now we're charging somebody a hundred and seventy-five dollars or a hundred and fifty, whatever it comes to with court costs. And like I said, the next time they don't come to the MRF at all, they kick it in the ditch on the back wall. So I think we need to know true costs. And everything in here, I think we need to send this back to committee and get some true costs in there.
Is that a, a way of a motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
I'd second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion in a second. I, I, there's, there's been a lot of discussion and I, I hadn't attended the last solid waste meeting. But it sounds like there were maybe some things that were brought up that with the citations and stuff, I don't know if you folks were aware of that before that the sheriff has pointed out to us here tonight. And for that reason, I think it's probably prudent to send this back and at least mull it over. And again, we have some teeth there right now to go up from the, to the two thousand, but also to go to the five hundred and, and exercise that option. But when it's levied as a, a fine or forfeiture versus a citation, seems to make a big difference.
I would rather see it as a fee.
As a fee.
And if we're going to do it, and I, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify my motion a little bit. I didn't have enough time to make it there before somebody seconded it, but I have to live with it sometimes. With the, I, I want to know if our operator is fine with their scale attendant doing this. Because I could see some liability issues falling back on the county there. You know, all of a sudden we have a court date set up and comes up and the scale attendant can't make it. Where that scale of tenants no longer employed with them. You know, there, there's some issues there.
Herb Council Ray, did you, did you hear that as well? It's, that'll be something that I would hope that you could look into or help us with, or Amanda.
And I guess I apologize. I thought everything was in here and I should have looked when I saw the numbers weren't in succession. I should have went back and looked at the solid waste ordinance.
Ray, did you, Ray, did you hear me? David Ray?
I mean, Dave, yes, I did.
Okay, yep. The question about the scale operator issuing that citation being a, not an employee of the county.
Correct, yep.
Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you. This, this is for you, a question for you. We have language like forfeiture versus fee and the language of forfeiture is in an ordinance. Is that different from what we, what we originally had? Because we had originally the crossed out language of four point seven point two four. Anyone who violates this ordinance shall forfeit not less than fifty dollars and so on and so forth. And now the only thing we're doing different is if you go down to number three and point, four point seven point two four, it's the same exact language, except it's up to fifty, two hundred and two thousand dollars. So is this, is this a fee or is this a, a forfeiture that is like, that's going to have court costs with it?
Word forfeiture means it's a forfeiture. It's a, so it's a, it's a civil, civil amount in a civil case. It's not a fine like in a criminal case. And as you point out, the, the language is the same from the old version of our ordinance to the new. It's, it's a forfeiture.
Where did we get off on, on calling it a citation? Where, was that in here anywhere or the language? I'm not finding the word citation.
And that's my whole point is that nothing has changed. We're, and we're just modernizing the ordinance to actually fit what the Michael's done. It's basically the same thing. It did increase the numbers of, of the fines. But other than that, the language is still the same.
Yeah, the word, the word citation is in there, both in, both in the old version and the new version.
Don't tell the courts we're all, for all the back ones, we give court costs.
I'm sorry, we couldn't hear you without the microphone.
I said, don't tell the courts we're all for all the back ones for the court costs.
And who, who enforces if you pay a forfeiture? You know, what, what's to say, some, you say, well, you have an extra ten dollars on top of your, your fee for unsecured load. What if they drive off? Say, you know, here's, here's the designated amount in the window and I'm not paying you your ten dollars or your fifty dollars or your five hundred dollars and they drive off. Who enforces that?
Sheriff's Department, they have license plates, camera.
Supervisor Maresi.
Sorry, sorry for interrupting, but we, there's license, there's a driver's license plates are all covered at the, with the video.
The sheriff would like to respond.
Yeah, just, just under the ordinance right now, under four point seven two four and four point eight point one oh, we issue citations on that and the forfeitures range from the minimum of fifty dollars for the forfeiture, which the citation then is two hundred and fifty cents to maximum of five hundred dollars. A forfeiture which then the fine is seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And under four point eight point one, that's recycling violations. There's first and subsequent violations and they start out from, again, two hundred dollars all the way to two thousand six hundred dollars.
And this is under current standards as is right now?
Under Portage County ordinance, yeah.
Would, I, I think we need to utilize what we have on paper now and.
Well, if, you know, it, it kind of sounds like we're, what we're, what we have is, what we're reflecting in this stuff as far as up, you had said up to two thousand dollars, didn't you, Sheriff?
That's for the recycling violations on four point eight point two through four point eight point nine. And then the solid waste ordinance from four point seven point one zero through, I think it's four point seven point two three. And I don't see the four point seven point two four enforcement action of it. But that's, if, if you look under our current ordinances, that's in there listed right now.
So if, if fifty dollar forfeiture turns into a two hundred dollar and fifty cent fine?
Oh, yeah. Supervisor Larry Rakowski.
Just a comment as a rules supervisor. You know, I'd like to see us work with people as well as we can because if not, any rules supervisor knows it ends up in our ditches in our townships. And, and it's, it's a lot of stuff. My township went to a, a large item drop off day twice a year. So the town members' stuff gets picked up and it's amazing amount of stuff that, that gets picked up every year with that, with that drop off. And it keeps the town stuff out of our ditches, but we still get computers and TVs and, and stuff from everywhere else.
I know though that we, we need to find a mechanism or something for staff. If any of you drive along highway fifty-four going to Rapids or from Rapids in the spring of the year, the amount of garbage that's out there is, is unbelievable. Supervisor Charlie Gussel, you got a comment?
Yeah, I don't know where to start on this. First of all, I'm from the town of Grant. We have our own. And we do have a illegal, we do have an illegal people dumping. The DNR is involved in it at times. If somebody dumps a bunch of tires or something like that, they come out. We're going to have to be a little careful here because you're spending a lot of taxpayer money. If for a small, if somebody makes a small misdemeanor and somebody decides to be a Napoleon and stops them with a big fine. Next thing is, somebody dumps, we got so many miles of road and you're going to have the same amount of miles of dump. And that's what's going to happen. And you say, well, we'll go through the garbage, we'll find out how, who it is. Well, you can do that. But what if I get, uh, get a fine and I go and get somebody else's garbage, throw it out there and it's ID'd to somebody else, they're going to get fined too? And you're going to see a lot of this. You're going to have a backlog in your court system. I, I think you should spend more time educating these people. Catch more bees with honey than you do with vinegar. So I don't know if you've got a big problem or not. Town of Grant has a problem, but you always have a problem with something. But I think you should seriously back off on some of this stuff. You're going to be sorry.
Supervisor Lattick.
Uh, two comments. One, I think these violation penalties are, are way high when it gets to the third offense. I think the penalty should fit violation and I don't see this being reasonable at all. They have up to two thousand dollars on, it's referenced here three times in four point seven two four and four point eight eight. And the other comment I have is you mentioned highway fifty-four between Plover and Rapids. I can tell you that your hauler you got out of there, I followed him one day and the trap was blowing off that semi trailer steady and it's coming out of our MRF. I mean, we're probably the, the one that's violating that stretch of road there. So, and I followed him and I know that's fact.
Supervisor Maresi, then Supervisor Reese, or you got Supervisors Astro?
Uh, one, one last one for me. I, you know, people who are going to dump garbage in, in ditches, that dump garbage in ditches, they're not going to the MRF. They, they don't care. They want whatever they have in their possession, out of their possession. It's not like a bad experience at the MRF is going to make them not go back there. They're not going there in the first place. So I'm not sure about some of these arguments. I think the, the point is, is that we, we need to be able to hold people accountable for their actions or maybe their inactions. We have a, I, I don't want to misspeak, but I, is it, I think we have an eleven person board. And we all voted unanimously to, to move this forward in the best interest of our county. They represent the towns, the cities, the village, the county in general. And we definitely did our due diligence on this. I think that we should move forward with this and pass it. I don't know as a point of procedure what that means. I know you have a motion on the table, but I will make a motion to pass this sentence.
I've already got a motion to send it back to committee in a second. So we have to dispose of that first. So are you, is there anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Maresi?
No, I think that'll be it. Thank you.
Supervisor Reese, or then Supervisors Astro?
So I have a quick question for David Ray, if I might. As I read this, it appears that both the existing ordinance and some of the changes for the new ordinance are internally inconsistent in terms of the language. I am, I am not opposed in a due deference to the Waste Management Board. I certainly understand the situation, but I'm wondering if we don't need to make the language consistent in the ordinances.
Is that a, is that a que, is that a question or a statement?
No, that's a question for David Ray. Do we need to make the language internally consistent because it's not at the moment?
Not, not necessarily because we're dealing with two different issues. One is recyclables, the other is solid waste. And Amanda can speak to that again better than I can. But the other thing I can tell the board is that when, when the solid waste board was looking at this, both Amanda and it was attorney Tiffany Wonderland from our office, who was working primarily with Amanda on this, they, they consulted with folks at the DNR. And the DNR gave guidance to Amanda and to the solid waste board on this and, and reviewed the proposed ordinance and gave suggestions to us as we were working on this. And so in essence, the DNR ended up signing off on this as well. And if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, Amanda, our, our hands are essentially tied in terms of dollar amounts as they relate to enforcement provisions in something like this when it, when it pertains to recyclables.
That is correct.
Because that's, that's a matter of state statute and the DNR, you know, confirmed that for us and pointed it out to us. The other thing I'd note is that on the fifty and two hundred dollar amounts, you know, those are, those are fixed amounts, but the, the final stage, the two thousand dollar is it's, it's up to two thousand dollars. So it could be two hundred and one dollars, not two thousand dollars necessarily.
Thank you. Amanda, you, I. Attorney Ray had mentioned that the, it's statutory from this DNR as far as these, these fee amounts?
Not in the solid waste ordinance, but in the recycling ordinance it is.
Okay, Supervisors Astro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a point of clarification. It was said that tax dollars or taxpayers may be upset. This isn't using tax dollars. There's no tax levy here. To my, it's best of my understanding. Am I correct?
Correct.
Correct, she said.
Yeah, I heard her. So I think everybody needs to be made aware of that. Just a point of clarification. Thank you.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski, then Supervisor Splinter.
I'm confused, Attorney Ray. If this is a county ordinance, how is the DNR setting our fee schedule for a county ordinance?
They're not setting our fee schedule, except to the extent that when you're dealing with the recyclable law, that is in part controlled by state statute.
But we could set that fee at anything we want because it's under a county ordinance. Is that not correct?
As long as it's lesser?
But are you saying fee or forfeiture?
Tomato, tomato. What it, what it, under the county ordinance, under state statute, yes. If we're going to find someone under, give them a citation under the state statute, of course, it's spelled out in state statute. If we are operating under a county ordinance, we have the ability to set that fee as we feel so, correct?
It, yeah, it can't exceed what's in the statute. Do you have anything else, Dave?
No.
Okay. Supervisor Splinter?
I'm just going to add a little bit. I'd like to see somewhere on here formalizing that the first, the first violation, say I'm, I redo my roof and I, and I maybe not use the solid waste thing maybe once every five years. I redo my roof and I, and I maybe not use the solid waste thing maybe once every five years. But if I came in and I didn't have everything secured or whatever, then the employee. I mean, the first violation should be an educational warning. Stating that. Your, your road was in violation. We're warning you this time. And have that on record. And then the second time the person comes through, if they are overloaded and, and they've already been warned and they've already been educated. Then slap a fine on them for, you know, 50 to 100 bucks. That's pretty stupid to come back after you've been warned and educated the first time. So I'd like to see somewhere in this thing. Uh, formalization where the first violation, which you've mentioned. Happens a lot. Where we're not gonna fine you, but we're going to give you an educational warning. So that you, you know that if you come back to this facility and it's in the same shape, you're gonna get slapped with a fairly hefty fine. And more than $10. And I think that would kill a lot of repeat offenders now that became martial haulers. They should know and then they can, if they get, they keep coming back. Over and over, the fine can get up to that $2,000 level and, and that'll get their attention too, but the first, I'd somewhere in here have it the word, the first violation to the average citizen. That comes into the facility is an educational warning. Issued. That'll be on file.
Anybody else? Uh, Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
I do have one other question. There are units of, of government, of town government that are not part of our responsible unit. They're their own responsible unit. Do we have the authority to enforce? This on them? I'm not talking about the load law now. I'm talking about the.
I can answer.
Go ahead.
So we do not have the authority to uh, enforce recycling law to the non-member municipalities, but for the solid waste law, it is countywide. So we could.
So the recycling part of this should state that there should be a statement in here that none of the.
Oh, that'll come with the next one.
Are part of the responsible unit are, are not exempt. Otherwise, somebody reads this, somebody writes a, a forfeiture. Somebody, well, I know Stockton doesn't participate. I think, well, Plain doesn't, Grant doesn't. So somebody could write an order of citation in Grant. And then also to get to a court and get thrown out. I, I think that needs to be in here also.
Okay. I think we've talked about this. Uh, also wanted to say that uh, you know, Amanda's doing a great job out there at the solid waste. Uh, we're, we're fortunate to have her, so.
We thank you for your work.
Yep.
Could I ask one question for clarification? So if, when I come back to you for this, would you guys uh, prefer that we charge a fee? Um, in, and have it on our fee structure and then it's maybe 10, $20? And then for those violators who continue to violate, and we can word it correctly in here. Then, um, because this is the way I, I perceived this to go down and obviously my perception is not what everyone else's is. Um, if they continue, cause I do have one hauler that has come in um, more than 20 times this year without an uncovered load. Um, then at that point, I would more than, I would love to then um. Give them this information and to say, hey. It's 20 times, guys. Let's, let's go to the next, the next step. We're done.
So Amanda.
Everybody would agree with you.
What, and, and again, you're there day to day, the rest of us aren't and we, we uh, realize that. But the part that I find troubling is that, that if this person has been in there 20 times. You have the ability to level a five, or levy a $500 fine on him as it currently stands. It's a revenue stream. Start levying $500 fines. I guarantee he'll stop doing it. So, uh, you know, looking for that teeth, there's some there. Start giving them out.
And, and part of it, um, because I.
Especially habitual offenders.
I've called this, this company multiple times and they kept saying, well, there's no law. There, there's nothing on your book saying that I have to do this. And so that was part of the teeth and putting the secured part. In our ordinance so that I can say, it's right here, buddy. It's in our ordinance. So that was the other part too, so.
Yeah, isn't it already in the ordinance?
It doesn't say secured.
It doesn't say secured and.
Yeah, that's.
It just says, keep it contained.
Charlie, unless you've got something really riveting, I wanna move on.
Right, that is, it'll be short and sweet. Basically. How many citations have you actually written on your old ordinance?
We have never written a citation.
Is there a problem that bad?
Fees or fines?
We've never written a citation. Um, last year, uh, in 2020, we had about 30, 35 uncovered load fees that we issued. Um, like I said, 20 of them came from one company. Uh, the year before that, we had about the same. We have around 30 to 40 every year that we issue.
What is an uncovered load?
An uncovered load is when you come in and you don't have any straps, you don't have a cover on your, your tarp. Or anything netting to contain your load on your vehicle or on your trailer.
So if somebody comes in with a load of cardboard boxes in a pull behind trailer, behind a pickup truck. And it's not secured down, there's no tarp, there's no nets, there's nothing to keep the cardboard in there, that's an unsecured load.
We have many of those coming into the Town of Grant dump. I'm a mile and a half from it. And there's many of them that come by. Some people lose something every once in a while. But it's awful hard to prove.
We've got cameras. We'll catch them.
People don't do it intentionally.
So we've got a motion to uh, send this back to committee and a second. If there's no further discussion, we're gonna take a, a vote on sending it back to committee. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So state your name with a no one at a time. Did we have Maresi as a no?
Correct.
Who else? Do we have, Hono?
No.
Reese?
No.
Astro is a no.
So we've got. We have Zastro, we have Maresi, we have Hono. Who else?
Me.
Gifford?
Martinson.
That's it? Martinson is a no?
No.
No, it's a no?
Reese is a no.
Reese is a no? Okay. Anybody else is a no? That's everybody? Yeah. We're doing the tally.
So it is uh, 17 in favor with six nays.
Motion carries. It's going back to committee. Number 15, reauthorization of workers' compensation self-insured program.
Um, one second. Uh, resolution number 83, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes the continuation of the self-insured workers' compensation program.
Motion by supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Lattick. Discussion. There's no discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 16, cancellation of outstanding checks issued prior to January 1st, 2020.
Resolution number 84, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes outstanding checks issued prior to January 1 of 2020 to be canceled.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski. Seconded by Supervisor Merle. Discussion.
I have a question.
Supervisor Maresi.
Uh, thank you. Where, where did the money go that uh, the most check was?
Uh, hang on a second. Pam, Pam's moving to the mic.
So we put the money just into another account. It's, it's meant for the unclaimed funds. And then in the event that someone does. Find their name on the list that's with the Department of Financial Institution. Or on our list that's been publicized. Or they found one of the letters we gave them. They can come in and claim that at any time. So it's kinda like forever.
Forever.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that answered your question.
You're welcome.
I wasn't sure if, if we just put it in the general fund or what. I was gonna suggest that. You put it in the, the can for laying extra vaccines for our county. Good news of that. Uh, okay. Thank you. I'll stop you with Pam.
Uh, number 17 approving a, uh, I'm sorry. Trying to move it along. So we've got a uh, motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 17, approving a one-year extension of the Animal Control Service Agreement between Portage County and the Humane Society of Portage County, Inc. Effective January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
Resolution number 85, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee. This resolution authorizes a one-year contract extension with the Humane Society of Portage County for the year 2021.
Motion by Supervisor Ande, seconded by Supervisor Pataki. Discussion. There's no discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, last item. Informal presentation. Civil Clerk Board Portal Training.
Okay, well, I will try to make this really quick because I thought this was gonna be a short meeting tonight, so I apologize. Um.
Minutes, folks.
Yeah. And I'd like to get downstairs before polls close tonight, so. Um, so the first thing, let me just get situated here. Can everyone see that screen now? Yeah, okay. Um, so I wanna start out first with saying that um. Thank you everyone for your patience with Civic Clerk and I appreciate everybody's willingness to try this new um, program. Um, the individuals who have already validated your accounts, thank you very much. Um, for those who have not. Um, that's fine too, but uh, the, the initial link that was sent out to your email is no longer valid because it was only good for 24 hours. Um, but the good news is it's really easy to uh, reset your password or, or validate your account still. Um, so you are going to want to refer to the Board Portal instructions that were provided to everyone. So I did send those out to everyone. And everyone here in person, I did print off a copy for you as well. Um, and I believe it was in, included in the, the packet we mailed. So everyone should have a copy. Um, on the top of the first page is the um, the link for the Board Portal View. Sorry, I'm just getting used to this screen sharing thing. Um, so you'll wanna type that uh, Board Portal View URL into your web browser. And it will bring you to a screen that looks like this. Um, you simply need to type in your email address up here and then just hit. Reset password to go ahead and generate an email that will get sent to you for you to validate your account. I would just re, re, recommend to check your junk mail if you don't receive it. We've had a couple people where the email went to their junk, so. You should receive an email fairly quickly and if you don't, look there. If you have any issues with validating your account or resetting your password, once you have already done that, please give us a call at the County Clerk's Office. We're really happy to help. Um, you can also contact the IT department. They can help with that as well. Um, so once you get your login, you're going to wanna also bookmark that. Sorry. Um, you're gonna wanna bookmark the Board View uh, URL because when you um, initially validate your account, it will. The URL will actually change to something else. You don't wanna bookmark that, so. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and sign in and I'm just going to show you guys um, the different features in here and I will, like I said, be very brief, so. Um, if everyone can see my screen, up at the very top, if you click on your name. Um, you'll see the account settings, the email preferences and the help videos. Um, the only really helpful things will be the email preference. You can sign up to receive notifications for when. Something is published by a staff member, so if a new agenda or um, minutes get published, you can sign up to get notifications for that. Um, staff will continue to send uh, emails and, and packets out as we normally have. Um, and we'll certainly work with people that want paper packets, so. Um, the other helpful thing is the help videos up here. If you click on that, you'll find videos that will basically do what I'm doing now. It'll walk you through. The Civic Clerk um, Board Portal and give you an overview and then it also gives you an overview of the voting. Um, down at the bottom here, there's the um, the different tabs. The ones that you really need to worry about are just agendas, minutes and notes. Um, the notes section is if you. Take notes during a meeting, you can take your private notes, which I'll show you in a section later. That's where you'll see them. Um, the media tab is not active, so you don't have to worry about that. So I'm just going to. Go over to the minutes. Um, so the, the. The meetings that are published or that have published documents are what is going to show up in here. So right now, the only one is, that is published is the Executive Operations Committee Minutes uh, for February 3rd. So I'm just gonna click on that. Um, from the minutes, I call this the, the interactive minutes view. There's a couple different things that you can do. Um, you can go ahead and download a PDF of the minutes. And then to get back, you just have to click the, the back arrow on the browser. Um, you can see the attendance by clicking on the see roll call. Not super exciting, but it's there. Um, and then what I like about this feature is if you wanna know more detailed information about any item in the minutes. You can simply click on the item and it will give you detailed information. So you'll be able to see. Who the motioners and the second, seconders were, any action or motions that were made. The votes that were taken and any comments or discussion that was provided by the minute taker. So that's pretty much the minutes section. So I'm just gonna go back and to get back to the main screen, you just go back up to the upper left-hand corner. And hit the back button. Alright, and now I'm at the main screen and then I'm just gonna go over to the agendas tab and quickly go through that. So. Um, I did go ahead and publish the county board agenda for tonight. Um, like I said, if there's other meetings that are published that you are a member of, they will appear here. Um, again, the only one that is published is the county board. So you just have to click on that. Um, when you do, you again get the interactive agenda like you did with the minutes. Um, you can also. Download a PDF of the agenda. And then go back. Or you can download the entire agenda packet. And this is, um, in the instructions, there's uh, instructions on how to get a PDF um, downloaded and then it is. Um, bookmarked so you can easily uh, toggle to any attachments. So I'm just gonna go back. Um, again, if you click on, like the minutes, if you click on any of these items, you can see. Um, the item information up here and then any attachments will be available here too. And this is the notes section that I met, mentioned earlier. Um, if during a meeting you have any. Notes that you wanna take or if you have a, a. Comment to make that you might be third in line to speak, you can go ahead and put it in there. Um, those are private, so that's something that you guys can use if you want or not. And that is pretty much it so far for agendas and minutes. I just have one other thing to show you and that's the voting, but does anyone have any questions so far?
Okay.
Okay. So I just have to switch my view here. So the staff have been advised that they can run a live meeting with this software or they can just kinda do it how they have normally done it. Um, which wouldn't really impact you guys all that much except for the agenda or minutes looking a little different. So it'll be kind of up to staff that run the committees. Or boards or commissions, um, if they want to use this, but this is something that we do plan to utilize for county board. Um, and we do hope to get everyone on board for voting live during the meeting, um, which we will probably roll out at the April county board meeting, so. Um. Just gotta get the meeting started here. Sorry, I'm trying to click back.
While she's going through that, I wanna make a, an announcement too. If anybody gets an email from me. Asking for help or to contact me, look at the email address. If it says BigBossAl@gmail.com. It's, and it says best regards on the bottom. It's not me. There, on the upper right-hand corner of your, of your screen, there's a, a little red fish. Click on that and you can send it to IT uh, so that they're aware of it, so.
Are you like Big Big Al?
I, I, I should get gift cards, I've got this matter that somebody needs to get back to me, I've gotten more calls about it, so please, just delete them, don't forward them, just delete them, or send them on to IT through that little red fish in the upper right-hand corner. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So, um, I initiated, as the staff member, I initiated the meeting, so now if, and this is something that I would do like before county board started, um, as a board member logging in, you'll see that this green button has now appeared, that you can join the meeting. So I'm just gonna click that. I made myself a county board member for tonight for this, um, example. So I'm going to go ahead and mark myself as present and voting. Um, I'm not sure there's many situations that you would use present and not voting, uh, because there's an abstain option for voting, so, um, you'll click present and voting, and then just hit save. And there you are in the meeting, um, you're present, and the staff member can see that. Um, I just have to switch over to initiate a vote to show you what the screen does for that. A second. And you guys don't have to worry about this, this is all staff screen, so.
Hell, I see, uh, Attorney Ray is still on. Um, those private notes, are those subject to open record requests?
Typically not. Typically not.
Okay. I just, I just happened to think about that as you clicked past that.
Yeah, although it's, it certainly raises an interesting question, because, you know, you're using, you're using software as opposed to the old traditional writing things down on a notepad and sticking it in your folder. Tough to look at that. One more thing to do.
Well, plus you're using county equipment if you're using your tablet.
You're using county software, you're using county tablet, you're on county time, you're at a meeting, yeah.
Bob, did you have a question, or Supervisor Gifford too?
Yeah, the, the live voting thing, um, seems that that would work pretty much like the clickers that we have.
That's the whole purpose or the whole intent for it.
Yeah, so this, just as like an FYI, this whole project started because of COVID, because we couldn't use the clickers anymore, because we have half of our board working from home, attending remotely, not using the clickers. Um, so we went to roll call voting for a while, which is very cumbersome and time-consuming, so we've been doing voice voting, which is also kind of time-consuming when there's no votes and you're trying to calculate it on paper. And then also just with the WebEx system, sometimes calls are dropped, so when we take a vote, Stan Pataki might have fallen off, and we didn't know that, and then it pops back on. Did he vote on that? I'm not sure. So it's just things like that, you know, we're trying to keep a better accurate record of this. Um, so this system will basically be like the old clickers, just kind of updated for twenty twenty-one. So, um, I have up on the screen, I initiated the vote as a staff member, and basically you have the clicker up there on the screen. So, um, you're voting, it says what you're voting on up here, the approval of the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes, and then the motion is to approve the minutes. Um, and then you have yes, no, or abstain, so.
So it's, it's a virtual clicker.
It's a virtual click, clicker. Um, we're hoping that, you know, we'll get everyone on the, the surface tablets that are in person here or remotely, um, so that you can log into the meeting and vote whether you're here or remote. Um, for those of you that might not be open to the idea of surfaces, or tablets, or electronics, um, or just have, you know, difficulty learning with some of that stuff, you know, we're here to help, and we wanna make this work for, for all of us. Um, but staff do have the ability to, I can mark someone present and voting, um, I can mark someone's vote, it would still have to be like, okay, uh, Supervisor Dodge, how do you wanna vote? I can enter that in for you. So there are some limitations in that sense, um, but I think it still gives us flexibility if someone forgets their tablet one day. You know, it's, we're not, you can't not vote or something, like, that's not what's gonna happen, so we can work around things, so.
Yeah, and one of the big reasons for it as well is that I do believe that the roll call vote can affect the vote, and that by us voting with this, uh, you're getting a, a better, uh, snapshot or opinion, so. It's not swaying anybody's opinions.
And one nice feature that I will just say, that we won't be able to use right now when we have people at home on WebEx, because we wanna have the screen up there of the WebEx, so everybody can see each other, but if we get to a point where everybody's back in person, the screen that we can project up there is a, a live meeting screen, and it basically will show the results of the voting, kinda like we used to have, um, but then it'll also show, okay, who is speaking? Um, if there are members of the public that signed up to speak, uh, we can put their names in there, and it'll automatically start a three-minute timer, and then it'll go on to the next person after that three minutes is up. So there's some other neat features that we can utilize eventually, um, it's just something that we won't move to at the moment, so. Um, so I just put in my vote up here, and then you just have to hit save, and then that goes to the staff member, and once everyone has voted, they can close that voting, and then, like I said, uh, put it up on the screen if they want, or just call the vote. So that is pretty much it. There isn't anything else really that you guys would need to know, um, to log out, it's just up here, you click on your name and go down to log out, and everything that I went over tonight is in the instructions manual with screenshots, so if you forget something, it's in there.
If anybody else has any questions, please call the office, Stan. Stan, go ahead.
Yeah, so that's, that's pretty much all I have, so thank you, guys.
I know, I didn't wanna tell him, I...
Stan, you're muted.
Yeah.
I don't, I think he's trying to unmute himself.
All right, I think I got it. So you were saying that if we're coming to the board meeting, you still have to bring this tablet with you?
Yes.
Yes, please.
All right.
That's your, that's your clicker, you have to bring your own clicker, so, okay. Supervisor Maresi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Keel, I have a question for you. Uh, I noticed when you had the item that was being voted on, there was a description that said the minutes of, you know, X, Y, Z. Is it possible that when we have amendments to certain agenda elements, that you could project on the screen, like, what the amended motion would be, so then we can...
Yeah.
We're able to read that, or, or, you know, just to take it there, so we can understand what we're voting on.
Yes, um, so if we do the live meeting, I would be typing in, so it might get a little slow sometimes if we have a big amendment, um, but yes, I can type that in, project it on the screen, um, it'll pop up on your screen for what you're voting on as well.
That's great, thank you very much, I appreciate it. And thanks for, you and me for doing all the legwork on getting us in the twenty-first century, it's, it's really great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, I will take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Jakowski to adjourn. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? For adjourn, thank you.